Twenty twenty-five, and I'm almost, uh, we'll ask Commissioner Hopson to open up with the first.
Thank you very much. She was gracious. Thanks for giving each one say terrific. It was a thank we see and it will be believed. Great you to believe those of us know one recent days of or just confident that you can afford. Great you just believe that we'll see just testing to you in the bodies figure as well. Thank you just to give them what I think we have to tease, but it's just mine.
Amen.
All right. Keep calling meeting order. We do have a quorum. I'd like to acknowledge all the guests that are here today. Have anybody set up, uh, peak public? Okay. All right, uh, we'll close the public hearing. Uh, we'll deliberate and consider action on the following items. Uh, item number one, discuss and consider award of construction contract on TDM HM BP DR forty-three thirty-two dash zero-one four-four TX. As precinct one road and drainage improvement. And that's Mr. Nick.
Sir, so, uh, on May the sixth, we took, uh, bids on a structures project, project in precinct one, County Road thirty-sixty-two. Had nine, had nine bids turned in.
Uh, that was really good to that.
Really good. That's a long bid that took a long time to get through them all. So, uh, the low bid was received from elite contractors and equipment out of Kirbyville. Uh, they're currently doing work for the county on a different grant. And based on that, based on the bid, our extensive work history with them, our recommendation is to award this contract to them in the amount of two hundred twenty-five thousand, six hundred eighty-five dollars. There were two hundred seventy-six thousand, eight hundred seventy-seven dollars fifty cents in the grant for construction. Which essentially means we're under budget by a little over fifty-one thousand dollars under budget.
Yes.
Any questions on anything?
At precinct one?
Precinct one.
That's, uh, that's that road they was floated in for a month in last April. Flew it in for a whole month.
Part of that TDM HM GP grant started back in twenty eighteen, I believe.
So this, this group here, you worked with them before?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Good with.
They're building, they're building bridges in the county right now.
So they do good work. Um, I'll make a motion that we, um, approve the contract or award the contract to elite contractors for DR forty-three thirty-two dash zero-one four-four TX to precinct one.
I second.
All right, I made the motion. Commissioner Benson's second. All in favor? All against? All right, uh, item number two. Approve order approving the plant of Eagles Landing Estate subdivision in precinct three pursuant to chapter two thirty-two of the Texas Local Government Code. Uh, all right, uh, we do have some representatives, um, on the subdivision. Now, this, um, this is the property up on Toledo Bend that y'all have subdivided. Uh, I've got all the, got all the subdivision, um, and everything so far has followed the county subdivision guidelines. Uh, everything is in order. Uh, there will be no county roads or no roads to maintain in the subdivision. So.
So, would you, I'm Kenny Mallow, the lead bid property representing owner, county and Karen Ben.
Okay.
So county rep comes right up to the land and we seven lots as you there. We just built cul-de-sac at the top of property that county rep.
That includes the cul-de-sac itself too.
Right.
Now, I've seen the other head letter from the, uh, SRA. They went through the, uh, proper paperwork for the each, each individual lot will have to have its own sewer and water. Uh, and that's all been cleared by the Seabee River Authority.
Correct. Had a sanitary, sanitary report done, uh, testing all the soil there. It's acceptable to Seabee River Authority for onsite sewer systems. Each property will have its own, uh, well, which would be required to put them up in a utility eat, but to make sure there's plenty of space in between the well and the setting.
No, just a question I had, uh, the, the county attorney, have you reviewed the plot design as compared to requirements in two thirty-two?
So I have gone over with the judge the proper process for accepting the flat. Uh, I've seen the paperwork, uh, I've seen the subdivision requirements. But I told the judge I didn't want to be responsible for saying, yes, this complies with subdivision law because that's not skill set of roads, septic systems, water systems, uh, like y'all are more in a, in better position to assess those. Uh, but I talked about yesterday, he reviewed it and I said if he was comfortable with that it complies with that, it's fine. I have a order, I've prepared a order. But as far as reviewing the flat to say, yes, it complies with the subdivision.
Okay, you know, as far as the subdivision roads for the county, you know, everything's in compliance with the county's, um, rules. So, uh, I see no, I see no problem not to approve it.
Uh, remember right, don't SRA qualify for sewer system?
They do.
Yes, they do their schedule.
They cover everything within two thousand feet up from the lake. Qualified for them to govern that on site service.
And water also, right?
Yes.
Okay, and here's the, uh, letter from the Seabee River Authority. Um, Mr. Ryan Pay. Uh, he's assistant division manager. And he stated, the Seabee River Authority of Texas authorized agent of the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. Recently reviewed the overall onsite sewage facility, planning materials and plat for your proposed subdivision. Eagles Landing Estates on Toledo Bend Reservoir. The OSSF planning materials have been reviewed, reviewed according to TCEQ. There's too many Qs in there. Guidelines and have been determined to meet the agency's minimum requirements, which may allow installation of certain onsite sewage facility systems. And the part that, uh, looking at this code, it just, it talks about deeds and, and assurance of deeds and validation of deeds. And that's the first time I've seen that. I don't know if they get that, but, uh, if, I mean, you're, you're, you're the guy that's looked at it. You feel good about it, if you want, you want.
No, I mean, I don't have time.
Thought everybody had a thought.
They should be, you know, your iPads and they got emailed out yesterday. The assistant.
But the way they have, uh, where they have the lots grown up, um, county road ends at cul-de-sac here and interest to each lot. If you want to explain that out, the way it, way it's grown up.
And, and I don't need it, Judge. I mean, if you've looked at it and you've done all your diligence on it, you feel good about it. It says, well, I'm good with it. Just, there's a lot of stipulations in there that we just need to make sure it's something like you had.
Yes. Yeah, I've, I've looked at it, asked questions for a week on it to make sure. Uh, well, I'd say a week.
We worked on it for, I think, two years.
Yes, so we got everything. I see where y'all got all the soil samples back early last year. So, uh, everything appears to be in order. So there's no extra maintenance on the county side as far as roads. Uh, it'd be all on the landowners for their sewer and water systems in the SRA. Sometimes it takes me more than a day to get on. Yesterday was not a good day for me, so.
But I'll make a motion we approve the order, approve the plan of vehicle plan to complete subdivision precinct three to chapter two thirty-two of the Texas Local Government Code.
Please, you to stay with.
Yeah. But it, uh, I'll second.
All right, it is in your precinct, so, uh, motion is made by Commissioner Hopson. Second by Commissioner White. All in favor?
Uh, uh.
All against? All right. Congrat, congratulations. Your hard work finally paid off.
It's how to increase our tax base.
All right, item number three. Received proposal from vested networks for Newton County phone services and to take appropriate actions if any. All right.
Hey.
Good morning.
Good morning, guys. Give a little clap that, um, I, um, wanna thank y'all for letting us present the vested solution to, um, Newton County. And vested, I mean vested, vested networks.
That's what we'll be vested in.
We are a, um, phone solution company that, um, serves lots and lots of counties in the state of Texas, including Jasper and Orange. And we, uh, serve tons of CADs as well, all over the state of Texas, and we look forward to earning your business here. We, uh, are a phone company that does not go down. We understand the importance, especially your sheriff's department, that it's critical and never needs to go down. And that's exactly what we promised to you. That's what we provided in the past. We've not gone down. I would love for you to, um, request some, um, references. Um, and we would be happy to provide those. Um, our company was started in twenty sixteen by Evan right here. Here's the owner of our company and CEO, Evan Huck. And, uh, he can answer any of the questions that you guys may have, um, regarding, uh, the new phone solution. What we do, if you choose vested networks, what we would do is come in and put all brand new phones in your county. We would install, it's on the ground, and we would set them up however you want. And we would train your staff on how to use them. And we would provide the service. And then the most important thing that we would do is we would provide tech support afterwards. If you needed us, you dial H E L P from our phones. It goes directly to our tech line. The guys pick it up within sixteen seconds and they speak texted. You can get ahold of us. You know, come in, in, come in and stall and then you never can find us.
Do they have accent?
Does it, does it have? Yes, kind of probably a hit one. No, I'm just kidding. Uh, but we do answer the phone quickly. And so if you have any questions, here's Evan. He, um, will answer all your questions.
No, I mean, guys, we're here to just take care of you guys. Um, you know, our, our mission is really to think differently about everything that we do in telecom, right? No one likes the experience of calling AT&amp;T or calling Windstream, uh, because, you know, Windstream's here, uh, AT&amp;T also runs through here a little bit. No one likes that experience grabbing issues, uh, or not being able to reach anybody or, you know, that kind of thing, right? Or having to run around, not knowing what's available, what's not. But that's, that we do the things very, very differently. Uh, we, I, I like the white glove approach, right? With counties, you guys have staff that comes in and out. You have a lot of changes that happen. You have, I mean, there's so many different things that happen, especially in local government. And that's why we know. Uh, we actually found our niche back in twenty eighteen. Um, we onboarded our first CAD and, you know, uh, Faneen. And then consequently, the county shortly after. And it just became like, this was like, you guys need, you guys need our help. There's a lot of need here and, uh, especially in Texas and just the rural, uh, rural municipalities, rural, uh, government. And so we found, like, you guys just need support. You need somebody in the center corner that's advocate for you guys. You need, you know, hey, you actually need better internet or you need whatever solutions. We have connections. We can get you guys and advocate for you, you know, whatever it is. That's really what we're here to do. I take care of you guys. We're the only telecom provider in, actually in the US that I can find. Uh, I haven't gone searching outside of the border yet, but they're the only one in, in the US with a five-star solid rating across the board. That's very, very difficult to see. So, yeah, that's what we're here to do, take care of you guys.
Now, I know Sherry's worked with them, uh, on hitting the calls now.
I haven't heard of that. I've been able to.
Oh, oh, yeah. Based, uh, so based on the, like, I guess the August bill that I have from, uh, your existing collateral ring central, there's about a hundred and four stations on it. I already have a proposal that's kind of tentative. I was gonna wait on some of the last details, but, you know, they haven't gotten that. But it's already looks like, like, there's about five, six hundred dollar savings just in the tentative based on what was six months ago. Uh, so, anyway, or actually, no, that was like ten months ago.
Yeah, it's been a while.
It's been a minute.
Yeah, so, so we're looking at savings per month.
Correct. And we'll upgrade all the equipment, um, at no cost to you guys. Uh, we come in and just, again, replace everything, make sure there's zero downtime during transition. Really good at what we do. Um, so that's definitely our guarantee to you guys. And the whole thing, we kind of try to flip the, the script when it comes to like onboarding. Right? Like traditionally, when you sign up for a new service, like internet or phone service, whatever it is, you sign that contract at the very beginning. And then hopefully the person or the team or whoever it is comes installs the onboarding team or whatever it is, hopefully they do the job right. Right? And then, you know, now here or two months later, maybe we're on board or not. Throw that script out the window. What we do is we come in, we handle every single thing all the way through. Like, y'all will deal with phones every day. We did. Y'all will do with all those backend processes we did. So what we'll do is we'll come around and make sure that we identify every single need, like where all the phones are, all that kind of stuff. And then we don't lock anything down until the end after everything's been installed.
On track.
That's when everything, that's when we come back and if there's any changes that need to be made, we'll re-present that back to you guys. You know, if there's, but I think it's within, like, what, two, three percent change, um, then it has to come back before you guys, but generally not.
You know, like, we're, we're a long there account. You know, we have, uh, pretty well at one end of the county, we have, uh, precinct four, I mean, precinct two, and on the other end of the county, we have precinct four.
Sure.
Uh, you know, there are funds. And then we have sub courthouse in Deweyville. So, you know, would that be all able to?
And we'll make sure that things are working like as expected. And if there's any issues, please let us know. Like, that's one of the things that we love is feedback. So during, especially during onboarding, right, make sure we identify problems and we're gonna be here for probably close to maybe two or three days. Uh, I mean, it doesn't take us long to come in, get everything switched over. Uh, and then we'll train everybody by, you know, by the kind of materials that we need to for you guys. So.
I know I tossed to Jasper County and they gave y'all good, good recommendations. So that's Jasper County.
So, so I have a couple of questions. So, so I, um, I mean, I've got, uh, the feedback I've got on you guys from Chris Southend and Orange is outstanding. Uh, but the questions I have, so we're currently under contract, correct? Right, say again? Right. So, so what we have to be careful of with the court is that we follow our procurement policy, we follow our contractual and our bidding process. Yeah, so when you, when you sit here and say, I look at what you're spending now and we can beat that as a court, we can't, we can't have somebody come in and look at a contract we're in and say, yeah, we can beat that by this much. We've got to do our due diligence and follow our policy to say it's up for bids, contract is ending. And then we'll do sealed bids, so you don't just try to beat what we have. You try to give us the very best you can, so. But that's just my thoughts sitting here.
Sure. Yeah. Do you have satellite phone? You know, hurricanes come, I had to move my phone so I could deal with it. And do you have Ring Central so I go myself?
Yeah, so, well, two different questions you have there. So there's some, like, we have the cellular app, so you can actually, like, on the cellular, cellular networks and stuff like that. We don't have sat phones. Those are a very interesting league under their own. Uh, but we can do anything that's, uh, like, if you have the new, what, T-Mobile or it's connected to, uh, Starlink, right? That's essentially sat, sat phone sound. Uh, thank you, Elon, everyone else out there, T-Mobile doing that. But that actually enables now mobile data, no matter where you are, uh, right? Be able to make and take those calls, uh, through the app on your phone. So, for example, I was, uh, I was actually on call this morning. Um, obviously I don't have my desk phone around here at all. Right? So I can be mobile and, yeah, driving down the road, still make and take calls, doing what I need to do. So that's one. Um, and in terms of the Ring Central, we are a, uh, virtual competitor to Ring Central. So the, the service is supported, right? And the functionality is very, very similar. Uh, we know a lot to support. The, the functionality is very, very similar, right? So we have the mobile app, we have, we have the kind of baseline four functionalities that, you know, again, these are just features that people probably. So, but that's what we really take care of is, I don't like the, just whole, someone comes in, just installs and you never hear from them again until I get an issue. Like, we actually, I actually do a follow-up, like, uh, day after, week after, month after, three and six months later. And then we'll continue to follow up every three to six months after that. Just to make sure if you guys, you know, change, changes, any issues, you just, you know, experience it, but you don't.
So you're, so you mentioned you're here for two or three days.
Yep.
What are you doing?
We're going around installing the phone, swapping things out, hoping, uh, changing up the routing.
Oh, in Jasper County?
Yeah, so that's what we did in Jasper. I mean, it only took us about three days to install everything in Jasper. So, and then we'll, like, again, whenever the installation and everything like that comes up with you guys, that will take different options.
We are on the tip floor too.
Yeah, tips. And DIR, finally, Texas DIR. It went eighteen months in, like, now we're, yeah. They opened the stuff, they finally responded to us, uh, last week. So we're actually, last week, this week, beginning of the week, anyway. Uh, like, we're finally working on getting approval for Texas DIR. So which is the information resources, right? So that's another one of those documents, stuff like that. So, to answer the question on the, uh, RFP. If you're on the, that's one of the things that the Texas Legislature allows is that I once, so, under my word, can essentially skip the RFP process if you want to.
One of the main things that's different about vested networks, and I don't want you all to forget this, is that we have down home customer service. That's the, that's the number one thing that's different about us. So I brought you some down home homemade bread. So you do not forget that we have down home customer service. I know it's a little goofy, but that's who I am. So here's. Down home at my house. That makes us very different, sets us apart from any of the other, um, telecom companies out there. When you need us, you can get us, you know? And we even reach out, like he said, to you before you even need us, you know? To make sure things, we want them, we want your phones to, you not even think about them. They are just, they just work.
Yeah, and the, uh, you know, I'm talking about the, the contract that you guys are under. That contract is actually up in, uh, in the August. So right, essentially September first, uh, it's kind of year out on that one. So you're only just a couple of months away from, right?
I knew, I knew it was coming back up this year.
Right. So, you know, it was, uh, I think it was, uh, um, exact date, but it was the commissioner's court in August of last year, where it was re-approved to review with them. So, it's all re-able shortly after. So, yeah. But anyway, that's what we're here to do, um, you know, just want to get the final numbers so we can get your, uh, proposal, if you go to accepts, you can, if you want to do the RFP process, you can as well. Um, I hope you guys want to do it. So that's what we're here to do, is take care of you guys.
Well, thank you for your presentation.
Very well.
All right. And thank you for the, uh, down home bread.
David.
Yes, sir.
Walk here with no chalk pad would be proud.
Thank you.
All right. Item number four. Authorized execution of contract with Trail and Associates for grant administration on community wildfire defense grant. Uh, CO dash twenty-five dash zero four one. We got Mr. Mark here.
Guys, good morning. Been late this morning. Been one of those mornings. Um, both this contract and the next agenda item, uh, the county has gone through the purr mode. Y'all awarded both of these contracts, uh, while I'm back. This is just the actual execution.
Did anybody have any questions on the execution of the contract with Trail and Associates? So this is, so the first time you actually you, you put together a submitted
Yes, sir.
For the, for the grant.
Yeah.
So this is something different in the fact that this is the contract to do the work.
This is the actual contract document, the physical document that we submitted proposal for. So this is just the execution of the contract. It's my understanding, the county, the county desire was for a signature on all contracts to fill that before. It's not, it's not a state requirement, not a, not a GLO requirement, not a Texas agricultural requirement. It's just my understanding that Christian sport has requested this. This particular contract, ordered by Commissioner Ford on October twenty-fourth.
We submitted that paperwork for that grant for the forestry grant, correct?
Yes, the grant is now funded. And once again, y'all, y'all realize with grants, uh, just because you apply for one, that doesn't, doesn't. We don't want to overburden you with paperwork. It's typical, we don't go back and actually execute the contract till we know you're. we don't want to overburden you with paperwork. It's difficult. We don't go back and actually execute the contract till we know you're done.
So today we'll find out exactly how much we're getting at one third.
Uh, we'll go over it. It was actually awarded to the county three months ago.
Yes. Yeah, we talked about it in previous, what was it? Hundred and forty-five?
Hundred and forty-eight five.
Okay, I knew it.
Yeah, we're, we're, we are a little slow following up with the contract, but, but it was actually awarded to the county several months ago.
Now that contract, that hundred and forty-five was just to execute wildfire defense plan.
Just get it executed, not what the actual funding will be to the county, right?
That was funding to execute the paperwork and all of your business.
That's funding to the county for the wildfire safety defense plan.
Plan, that's.
Yes, sir. Yeah. Now this, this is, this contract is for completion of the, the plan.
Right, okay. And then with the, the plan that allows the county to compete for, you know, equipment and procedures, manpower, whatever to uh, facilitate the plan.
You're more favorable, but with that application.
Jasper's already gotten their funding, so. A bit behind, but I'll make the motion that we authorize execution contract with Trailer and Associates for grant administration on community wildlife defense grant. CO twenty-five oh forty-one. Second.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Powell, second by Commissioner White. All in favor? All against? All right, we'll move to item number five. It's authorize the execution of contract with Trailer and Associates for grant administration on TDM contract DR dash forty-four eighty-five dash O two hundred for Mauriceville utility district for a generator. So, and this is, we've been awarded that grant and basically same as Mark's quote a few minutes ago about administering the contract.
That's a ten percent match that Bud is actually funding with.
Yes, sir. There's, there's an MOU this.
Yeah. So I'll go ahead and make another motion that we authorize execution contract, Trailer and Associates for the grant administration of TDM contract for Mauriceville Mud Generator Project.
Second. All right, motion made by Commissioner Powell, second by Commissioner Hopson. All in favor? All against? All right, item number six, discuss and approve auction of nineteen eighty-nine sixty-six ten Ford tractor. Uh, that's precinct three.
They may have that route. I need to get rid of it. Like pretty in that option.
Okay. Like you used to have a lot of years left in it.
I don't know.
All right, uh, I'll make a motion that we approve auction in nineteen eighty-nine sixty-six ten Ford tractor precinct three in, in upcoming auction.
I second.
All right, motion is made by me, second by Commissioner Benson. All in favor? All against? All right, item number seven, discuss and approve closing off approximately a hundred and fifty yards at the end of County Road twenty-one thirty-five. That's.
Jesse Leach, he come here a couple of weeks ago and he, and it burned us all, all family there. It was off six ninety-two. They wanted, they wanted to stop the end of it because they coming in on purple property right there. They don't have no way to turn around and they parent their property. So they go into the main entrance. You'll be open to come into all of them. If that hundred and fifty yards closed off, we're even fence it to keep outsiders from coming in.
I think we looked at this drawing last time that gentleman, too. Missy, you paying attention to this, sir? Thank you.
I'm familiar with the property. Previous life, they had pipelines that run through his property. Uh, comes off six ninety-two, there's a substation and or telegraph ban, and then the road just goes right. His daddy had a house and then there's only two houses there on it. And then it kind of dead ends. I was, I didn't know it was a county road, but, um, people do come in there and go through his place and what he closed, y'all would get back out on the highway. But it's not been maintained by the county.
About the end of it, you know, and then they, well, they, it's great, they, they didn't know. It's, they didn't stop him in time, you know?
There's a portion of the road that would come back or anything to six ninety-two.
Yeah, it makes loop six ninety-two right to her. It comes in and then it comes right back out and the, or end with one, closed off.
So the part we're talking about closing off, that from the part where you're proposing the county road end, all the way, the loop all the way back to six ninety-two, does it only go through this guy's property? No other property?
Just, just the Leach's. Jesse and his mother, she's still there, they're in the Bay of Leach.
So, with that being said, I'll make a motion that we approve closing off approximately a hundred and fifty yards at the end of County Road twenty-one thirty-five, um, on the Jesse Leach property. All right, motion made by me, second by Commissioner Hopson. All in favor? All against? All right, item number eight is discuss and approve auctioning van from, uh, nutrition center. Now this van, uh, enclosed, we don't want to put it in auction. It's got a hundred and ninety-eight thousand miles. Transmission went out in December, but we chose not to fix it and it's sitting out there in the used car lot at the prison.
Got any other issues with it?
It's just a hundred and ninety-eight thousand miles. It's not worth putting transmission. Transmission costs more than what the van worth.
Y'all gonna do this auction?
Trying to get, uh, everything, everything together. Got Commissioner Powell's boom bower on right now. So we just, stuff keeps getting added. So we're trying to get all the pictures, everything on there.
Yeah, all of it, got everything we want in there.
And that, print it's had the, uh, the tractor, I think, light, uh, you had, and we put this van in there. Hopefully we can get it, get everything going on it next week or so. Just getting time, get out there and take pictures of everything.
But that grass was equally intense, not gonna be able to get up to them, you know? We're to show them, I'm trying to look at it. You done cut? Yeah, for sure.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion that we approve auction the, the Dodge Caravan from the Nutrition Center. Twenty-ten Dodge Caravan, uh, in the upcoming auction. All right, motion made by me, taken by Commissioner Hopson. All in favor? All against? All right, item number nine. Accept compile financial report from ESD five under section seven seven five dash zero eight two one is sufficient in meeting the requirement of the audit per section seven seven five dot zero eight two of the local government code.
Yeah. So Judge, what this is, um, ESD five is the Devil's Pocket Fire Department. They do not meet the requirements of seven seven five oh eight two requiring an outside audit. They have less than a quarter of a million in the bank. They receive less than a quarter of a million each year and that in the bank was last year, this last year's audit. But this is, uh, this, their compiled financial report, um, I took it to, it was brought to me by David Artlon, member of the ESD board. Um, took it to Misty Spaschek, our Assistant County Attorney. She went through it. She, uh, felt good about its inclusiveness, passed it around before court, so folks could review it. But it also has on the front of it, a, an affidavit signed by David Artlon on May seventh, which is, uh, requirement in subsection D, C, I'm sorry, C of the oh eight twenty-one. Basically, he's attesting to the accuracy and the inclusion of this financial report and it is, it is very detailed and inclusive and we'll be following it accordingly. But I just was bringing that for them and like the court to accept that as their compiled financial report for that Misty won over last year. This is actually for two thousand and twenty-four. So with that, I'll make the motion that the court accepts a compiled financial, uh, report of ESD five as presented.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Powell, second by Commissioner Hopson. All in favor? All against? All right, item number ten. Uh, review and discuss procedure that outlines the operation of the nutrition center, specific tracking meals served incoming fund and charges sent to fund provider.
Yes. So Judge, I'll put that on there. What that is, that's a request, uh, since I've been on court, I've struggled with the, uh, the identifying the meals on wheels as compared to the nutrition center and how they're separated, how they work together. And what I was looking for, and I couldn't find it, um, I don't, haven't been able to find it yet, may exist, but if it doesn't, I think we should create an over, overlapping procedure that says, you know, this is, this is how we're going to run the nutrition center. This is how we're going to run the meals on wheels.
And I've, I've asked Sandy to come over and explain it.
Trying to answer your question, Mr. Powell. The, the meals on wheels program is actually two separate, funded by two separate entities, the state of Texas and DECA. So the Congress program is funded through DECA. Each one of us is built differently. To answer your question, we track all the meals that we serve, whether they're homebound or wheels or if they are at the side. They are a separate fund. The field set. Once we deliver our meals through our billing, create an invoice, it goes into DECA, uh, the state funding, it's done electronically. And all of that information, once it's gathered and filed, it's sent to the legislature's office. Once we get our check in, they notify me as well as the state for their, notify me with the difference. If we sign all of this, that situation is very, they're a, there is one. Sometimes it's safe that we can get anything filed. That's basically, it's three separate programs. Now, I would like to, I would like for all of you to have a big interest in this program because it affects every person. I would really like to set aside the time, y'all come and sit down with me, let me show you start to finish. I will receive an authorization for mine, or we authorize some only to get paid for meals to be served. And so you'll have a full understanding of how the program actually works. See, that's just a basic overview. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
And I appreciate the overview and the information, but what I'm looking for is a, is a procedure, a PDF, Word document like we have for all of our other processes in the, in the county, because when you look at this program, it's, we're, we're budgeting a large amount of money as accounting, then we're sending off, receiving, how's that money? We need a, we need a procedure that outlines, you know, uh, it sounds like you have a very strong working knowledge of how it works, but do we have a procedure? And that's what I'm looking for is when you sit down, uh, because not everyone has the opportunity to come sit down and some institu or resident, they say, well, I want to see the procedure for how the nutrition center works, how the meals on wheels works. I think it would be good if we had a standing document that says A, B, C, D, all the way through the list. So everyone in the county understands exactly the process and procedure who receives benefits from it, where those benefits are paid from, where that money goes back to and how to track.
Well, as far as, uh, HHS, you know, you can't release the names of.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm talking about. But as far as the clients, you know, the, the state actually, you know, qualifies and then contracts with the county to each individual person. It's, you know, it's through health and union subsidy, but uh, I know the state audit once a year or so.
You know, just once a year, just recently had a best review of DECA. There were no findings, there was no sign of them necessary. That the best review tells us all of them. We do have a policy that would do with our program income. And do you guys do that as well?
I, I'd like to look at it, but I, I don't think it requires action today. It's just a request to the county judge that we look at the totality of the two programs and how we can communicate the intent, how the operations perform, how we are sure that we're doing all the things that we need to be doing. And it sounds like we are not questioning that, but we need to be, you know, we need to be able to communicate that one end of the county to the other.
Exactly. And I think we need to do a workshop where Sandy can come in and explain to everybody, you know, show the state guidelines, DECA guidelines on you know, what it takes to track them again, how many meals served, you know, and they have specific guidelines.
Be great if we could have that procedure or that meeting where we could follow along with her.
Okay. We could definitely do that. All right. Item number eleven, review article four of Newton County flood predict, uh, flood damage prevention order that was adopted on August twenty-second, twenty eighteen. Uh, discuss the status of the county's compliance with the prevention order and how the twenty-five thousand donations from the SRA is being spent. Okay, uh, now it's the county has a basically, and I printed some copies out as far as the floodplain administrator. And I'll read that. All right. Uh, floodplain administrator. A floodplain administrator is a local official that is appointed by the county judge or mayor to administer the county's flood damage prevention ordinance and any of the activities related to maintaining the community's participation in the national flood insurance program. The daily duties of the FPA may consist of reviewing permit applications, uh, for development in the floodplain to ensure development will not negatively, negatively impact the community's floodplain. FPAs are also responsible for addressing code violation related to the flood damage prevention ordinance and coordinate recovery efforts in a major disaster. Uh, the specific duties of floodplain administrator can vary from community to community, but their main goal is to keep community reasonable, safe from flooding. And basically that's handled through the, uh, floodplain application. All new construction has to have a, uh, basically that's the only permit that the county requires is a floodplain application. You know, it comes through and in my office, fortunately handled the floodplain application. And you want to, can you explain, uh, what they go through on floodplain application?
Any development at all or anything over fifty percent remodeling from damage or anything else has to have a plain application. We determine, we use the FEMA maps, we determine if they're in the floodway. We determine if they're in the floodway. If they're not in the floodway, they go ahead and give me a notice to proceed. If they are in the floodway, we have an elevation certificate on anywhere. Houses, roads, anything like that has to have an elevation certificate, they baden outside service. Then that outside surveyor is going to bring that back to me. And, uh, basically all they do is determine the highest adjacent grade. And Newton County has required that you go two foot above that. That gives us a better rate on insurance. So we have, we have extra standards. So we will get the highest adjacent grade to go two feet above.
So any new construction, uh, has to be two foot above the.
Base flood.
Base flood.
But any construction at all has to do the application and let us determine in the floodplain. So anything that's done has to have that application, and then it goes a step further.
Okay, and as far as the twenty five thousand donated by the State River thought it, I was, uh, ten thousand of that, uh, when I had, uh, Crystal and Courtney. You know, I gave them five thousand each on her salary to handle this. But since Crystal left and Courtney's been handling everything, uh, so she's getting the ten thousand extra from floodplain work, and then the other fifteen thousand each year just goes into the general fund.
So a little bit about that. So where the, what, this is my line item. So where it initiated from was, uh, County Road forty one fifty four was included in, um, the April disaster request from FEMA last year. And in that, they, you know, they have questions coming back. One of their questions involved the participation of the floodplain manager in answering certain questions about that road construction and rebuild. So, um, I got to talking with some folks about that associated, that are not connected to Newton County. And they said, yeah, you're going to have to do this and that. You're probably going to have to have your, uh, your floodplain administrator, and, uh, I think they're called a F C M. Um, but, uh, you're going to have to have their number of certificate when you file that paperwork. So that drove me to ask the question of, I emailed Ms. Courtney and, um, said, do, do you have your certification as a certified floodplain manager, C of FEMA, I think is what it's called? And the answer to that was no. And so that stimulated this, but.
Well, in, in the state of Texas, uh, a floodplain administrator is not required to be, uh, certified. And, you know, she was working on getting the certification, but, you know, yearly it was going cost, you know, between the school every year and, uh, a hotel and it don't cost the county like a little over four thousand.
If they went to conference, took week off work, all that, we added all that.
So, you know, but the state of Texas is not requiring them to be, uh, certified. You know, it's, we stopped it, you know, she, she's still doing the training, but according to the state, she didn't have to be certified in floodplain ministry.
And ask Mr., you know, try to get ahead of this in case you arrive and ask Mr. Mark, had he ever run into that with a brand? You had said no, right, correct? What was, have you ever seen where an actual license number was needed?
It's, it's, and they're getting up, use license with certification. Floodplain managers are certified. I have never dealt with them requiring certification.
Were you certified as a floodplain manager?
Yes, sir.
So, you know, when I look back on this, we, we receive a twenty five thousand dollar donation each year. We have, since I've been in office, and it's in the budget, line item in the budget from the S R A for floodplain management, that's what it's labeled as. And then in twenty twenty three, uh, we received a donation, but there was no line items. Uh, the previous administration didn't put any line items in. But in twenty four and twenty five, we put line items in forty five hundred dollars a year for training for each year, uh, and we received that donation. So where I'm at with it is, you know, this affects the south end of the county probably as much as anybody that may be your precinct because of the elevation down there. So I know we just went through some buyout programs and those residents have almost rebuilt their homes. Um, I think five new homes. I doubt any of those folks applied for a certificate. And not because, not because any other reason, they didn't know they're supposed to. I, I don't think the court is probably as, so where I'm, I'm sitting here thinking, we get twenty five thousand dollars a year, and basically it's rolling over in the general fund, a large degree of it, a large percentage of it. And we're not using it as it was intended by the S R A to either educate the public or educate our floodplain administrator. Um, where I'm at, uh, we've got, when you go on the website, you look at who is a certified floodplain manager through the Texas Floodplain Managers Association. We have one in the county, and that is, um, Dana McDaniel. She is a certified floodplain manager. Um, so she is the only one certified to complete the paperwork and what have you. You talk about, I know you read off this on the, on the judge's, uh, deciding who the floodplain manager is, and if that's the way the court decides to go, I'm good with that. But in two thousand and eighteen, the court decided on August twenty second, and it's on our website. When you pull it up, it's, you go on to floodplain management, and it's a flood, the, this, the order that you referred to here. And it says the commissioner's court shall designate the floodplain manager for the county. So we haven't been doing that. We either need to redo that and say, hey, we're going to give that full authority to the judge, or the court needs to appoint a flood, certified floodplain manager. Uh, where I'm at today is we do need a certified floodplain manager. If you go in and you read all the things that go along with this, this is not, this is not a mediocre, fill out the application and get an elevation and be two foot above it. It has far more to do with degrees of water displacement and everything else. I was involved in those rebuilds in sixteen. Dana Ashmore has, Judge Dana Ashmore has countless hours of involvement in that and helping people get to the right place to meet those requirements. However, she's not a certified floodplain manager. So that's, that's a lot more of the story than, than, than what we just originally talked about. And, and I stand here today to say, we either going to need to change our position as court. We're going to need to do what the order was said to do in two thousand and eighteen. Um, I'm thinking we need a certified floodplain manager, which is the next thing on the agenda. And if we want to talk about that in closed session before we talk about that in open court, I'm good to that, whatever we're going to do. I'm not saying change anything in your office. I'm not saying take any stopping away from, from this, uh, Courtney Locke and what she's doing. But I'm saying we've got a certified floodplain manager in the county. We have collected seventy five thousand dollars from the S R A since I've been in office. And since I've been in office, I've seen twenty nine thousand of that seventy five thousand budgeted. So that means the remainder of that money is still in the general fund. And since we rolled money over every year since I've been in office, it has to still be there. It was intended to be used for floodplain management, and it shouldn't be used for other things. So I would like, um, for us to go in a closed session before we consider the next line item, if it's acceptable by the court and by the.
I, I want to ask one question. How long did, what did you say it take you, one week? You know, she just, she didn't get certification because of what the party, but she said she can have it in, in a week.
Well, that's testing, I have to schedule a test. I mean, I could do the, the studying.
No, I reviewed the, the process. It's not a one week process to become a, first thing you got to do is join the Texas Floodplain Managers Association. Then you got to file an application to even be tested. And, and I'm not saying we don't need to get her there. I'm all, I'm all about spending that forty five hundred dollars that the S R A has given to the county to do those sort of things. I'm not, I'm not against Ms. Courtney or getting her there. I'm just saying, we got a certified flood, floodplain manager sitting right next to her. We need to utilize that certification. We've got the funding to do it. I don't know why we wouldn't, but again, I'd like to, if it's, if the legal counsel can allow us to go into closed session and the judge supports that, I'd like to talk about that closed session before we move out on that line item.
I'm fine.
Twelve.
Discuss personnel matters?
Discuss personnel matters. Okay. So we'll do it at the end of the meeting rather than now?
We, we could do it now.
You want to do it now?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
We're back in session. The, all right, we'll move on to item number 12. Discuss and consider appointing a certified floodplain manager, CFM. And that's question five.
Yeah, so after a lot of discussion and reviewing of the permits associated with the National Flood Institute or National Insurance Program associated with flood, it is crucial that the county has a certified floodplain manager to make sure we're doing things correctly. So I'm going to make the motion that we appoint Kena McDaniel as our CFM, our certified floodplain manager, and appoint Courtney Lott to continue to work in and along that capacity, obtaining certified floodplain managers credentials by the end of 2025. And that the pay for these two individuals will be worked out through the judge's office. As has been, as a precedent has been said in the past.
No pressure.
And of course, that's an appointment that those persons will have to accept every court makes it through them if it's approved.
I'll second.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Powell, taken by Commissioner Hudson, all in favor?
All against.
Before? Oh, I say that.
He did that. Yeah, mine was.
All right, all against.
All right. Item number 14, discuss and consider method source of pavement home rubber tire mower residing in precinct three. That's the Caterpillar 315 wheeled excavator with a... 13. Oh. I didn't did too much scribbling on this one. Item number 13, discuss and consider replacing printer copier in the county board of precinct four.
Asha is down there with an old copier that can barely do anything. So she's needed a copier. And they have quoted us a lease for $100 a month for a Canon DX 259I color copier. And it's on a six month lease. And that's before complete, because she really got down there.
So it's...
That we own.
So it won't, so it has trouble scanning, but like when you print to it. And we try to get Shannon, I mean, if he can't fix it, it can't be fixed. You can't, you can't make multiple copies. Like if you pull up a document, you hit print, and then instead of quality, quantity, it's going to print one. And that's it, and that's important when you're doing presentations like with color copies. Because if you go to it, you print out one and you try to make a copy, it won't copy in color either. So it won't work for us.
I got one from the history center.
Is it wet?
No, it did got flooded. Said the copying company, copier company couldn't fix it.
No, it's not, it's, they, they don't own it. It's one of our old ones that we have.
And we just, we just spent some money on it. So I tried to print to it, and it give a code. So we unplugged it, plugged it back in, called our subject matter expert, went through all that, and kept throwing the code. And we called...
Jim. Jim had suggested this.
Well, no, no, we called Texas Computers Associates.
Right.
And they said, you know, you need to call these people. They sent somebody out. They did change a part in it, and it went back to working the way it was before, but it still, it won't. It won't do happy water.
Yeah, we got a spare nowhere.
No, I just...
Yeah, it don't have to be new. We'll take anything in the county.
I had a spare, but we took the one out of the library, and I took the spare and put it in the library and do it. I don't know, and y'all, y'all could have took that. It was...
Sound like we had options, huh?
Yeah.
Walmart.
I'm not against that.
The only problem is getting them to... And that's the problem we've run into before is printers, getting them on the network.
The ink, the big thing is if you run to Walmart and buy one, you got to buy ink, you got to get it up. This, this other process we use much more. So we get our ink through...
For same price.
Them copiers are like a stamp on...
Might have you want, yeah.
You got a Walmart printer?
Yeah, 84%.
Did you, does it work on the network? Shannon got it linked up and all, it's no security?
He did. Like I said, ink's hot.
Ink is a killer. We get our ink through the program we have with county.
All right, so I'll go ahead and make a motion that we replace the printer in the county board of Barna precinct four. All right, motion is made by me, taken by Commissioner Hudson, all in favor? All against? All right. Now, item number 14, discuss and consider method source of pavement on rubber tire mower in precinct three. And that, like I said before, that's the wheeled excavator, it's got the mower head on it. It come with a 130... What's the balloon note on it? 44. It's 144, final balloon payment. So we've either got to pay it or send it back. So...
I think that's my opinion.
I'm all sending it back.
Is sending, is sending it back an option?
Yeah, they can repo it.
I mean, what does that do to the county?
Well, I thought, Blue Baby, you gave this...
Well, you've had enough stuff, and then you still have the payoff and it's still a loan. So it still reflects on your credit. I mean, that's why most balloon notes are with young people that are trying to build a credit.
But don't have credit.
Don't have credit. Some of the thing of his, but I thought the whole, that you guys were going to sell it, correct? With the money back?
We're going to try to sell it, but you know, I thought, you know, when, when you asked him about the balloon note, keep it for three years and then turn it...
That's what, that's what they were doing, is they were replacing it in three years for that piece of equipment. So we need to start again with your loans, is how it...
So kind of, kind of backing up. So before 2023, the equipment was bought out of debt services.
Yes.
So it didn't impact the commissioners negatively. And in 2023, it was recognized that commissioners need to buy their own equipment. So at that time, we still had some pieces of equipment that were being financed out of debt services, and there was some money in there. I know in precinct four, we had a motor grader paid off, it was 170,000 precinct. He had two pieces of equipment paid off, it was close to 300,000. So where I'm at with this is, this guy just come into office, he don't have much money. He's got more than I do, by the way, but anyway, he don't have much money. But if we put this thing in auction, we owe 144. And let's just say we get 100 from, from that. Well, we've got 49,000 in the Road and Bridge General equipment, correct? So that...
Ask him if he can get services.
Okay.
Uh, get long with the payoff.
So we owe, so we got to come up with $99,000. If we put this, if we take $99,000 out of Road and Bridge General, put it with that other money and pay this equipment off, and then we auction it off. Let's just say we get $75,000 in an auction. I hope we get that money. We put that in Road and Bridge General. My recommendation, because we all benefited from it, is that every precinct make up the difference to go back into Road and Bridge General and get that money, get that back up to where it needs to be. But for today, you need a recommendation to rate, pay it out of Road and Bridge General.
Or let them repo. That's your court's decision. There's no way Green's has the money in precinct three to pay. And it's going to take all four commissioners to get out of precinct, you know, but...
I don't agree with that, that's a go back. That breaks your word.
Yeah. It's an integrity thing.
Integrity, yeah. I make a motion to pay it.
Money that we get from the auction will go back into... And if we get on the auction, we'll go back in to replace that.
I'll second that motion.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Hopson, second by Commissioner Brown, all in favor? All against?
And I guess at some point, Ms. Moore, if we don't get enough to replace what we took out, you're going to have to come back to court and tell us, are we going to have to make that up? And if we are, how much is it? And then we can talk about being a team.
It's thinking it'll print if we are planning. We are planning on putting them in.
Yes, yeah.
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 Yes, it will have a minimum.
And the equipment's in, isn't it fairly new, not been used?
Yes, 2018.
I mean, it's not...
I was fixing to be, I was fixing to trade it in. I'd already paid for them.
Well, yeah.
They waited another week, didn't they?
I was like...
I can't believe it, 2018 it hadn't been paid off.
Yeah, that's hard to understand.
I'm fixing to trade it out. Where you been in the world? I had somebody with it.
Basically, it's a 315 Caterpillar rubber tire backhoe with a, with a, not a backhoe, trackhoe, with a mower head.
It's got a...
You know, it's, yeah, so it's basically used for side boom mower. But it's slow, you know, that driver, put the outrigger down mode, you know, and then pick the outrigger back up. You know, so it's very cumbersome for what they needed for.
For reach to the... Oh, yes, we like airplanes too.
You need it down there. I'm going to buy it, you need it down there.
I got two side boomers.
Hey, I'm about to bid on that.
34. Hey, he said you pay it off, you can have it.
No. That sounds like we...
All right, item number 15 is discuss and consider signing letter of support for a potential new community pharmacy to be located in precinct four.
Yeah, what that is, so last week, I had a lady from the church call me. She said, there's a gentleman down here, she said, wanting to start a business, and she said, I thought of you, so... This is, this is the letter, and I'll just read it. It says, Mr. Max, thank you for taking time to visit with me this week. And for McKenzie's consideration for bringing a pharmacy to precinct four Newton County, to say that this possibility is exciting is an understatement. As we discussed in my office last week, our governing body is excited about the future of the county. Potential for new growth in the county seems to be increasing with each passing week. McKenzie's interest in bringing a business that supports health and wellness benefits is one that all of our residents, as well as neighbors, will embrace with open arms. We stand united as a governing body, ready to assist your company in the new venture. Again, thanks for your consideration. And what I've got on here is, starting with the county judge, just going down the list, is a list of county officials that I thought that if we sign this, their counsel supposedly is making a decision this week. He told me, as soon as I get it signed, if I can get it to him, send it to him, he would include it as in presentation. And what it is, there's a, there's a building that was previously a nurse practitioner's office in Deweyville. It's set up really well, they're talking about doing, I won't get into the details, but there's a lot of services they're going to offer that's going to be very beneficial for our residents, because we go to Beaumont or we go to Orange and see the doctor, we come back home, and then we got to go back to Beaumont or Orange to get our medicine. So they're going to have our medicine right there in Deweyville. It's going to be beneficial for Starks, Forest Heights, Double Pocket. And it's really a big win for us, but I was just asking, if the court be willing to sign this and get it in front of the script?
I have no problem signing it. Yeah, especially anything to benefit the presidency of the county. Right now, we have one pharmacy in Newton.
It's, this won't compete against Newton.
Oh, I know. Yeah. It's kind of hard sometimes when, when you need some medicine.
And they're, they're potentially going to offer services for health services that you have to go to the doctor's office and receive, like infusions and different things. Really good. They called this program...
I guess we need to vote on that.
Yeah, they call this program Pharmacy Oasis, and they're doing it across the United States. This company's like a $60 billion company. This is not a small outfit, so...
So I make a motion that please the court sign the letter of support for a community pharmacy located in precinct four.
Second.
All right, I made the motion. Commissioner Hopson's second, we've all signed. So item number 16 would be budget amendments.
I also have another line item transfer, pulling it from the contingency fund over to the indigent defense. One item, one of our inmates here, or one of our trials that we had, capital trial. The man was sentenced, he's trying to appeal the case, and... And if the county's response is always to pay for the reporter records that he's requesting, and it's $11,491.44. And again, that would have to come out of contingency, because we do not have a budget for that indigent defense. I would gas it.
I'll probably agree with you.
We have a, a drifter for them, it's just... And this is, uh, we're going to be, um... Okay, probably be very short, but I understand it. I've researched, I've done, I feel like five different people with district judges had signed off on this. I've, you said, and you guys said, we do have to pay this. I mean, once he gets prison, he goes, he's...
Yes. So...
Pressed all the records from the trip of the hearing, this trial.
So that's 11,000...
Anytime we have anybody move from contingency or to a line item, per gas fees, we all have to have a line item for not pay out of the contingency. So I want to keep that in mind as well.
So it's pretty much set by district court.
And I have, both district judges have agreed, the attorneys have agreed. I talked to the lady with the indigent care or the indigent defense, the controller, she's agreed, we do have to pay it, it is the county.
So I make a motion to do the line item transfer. 11,000 what? $11,491.44 to the indigent defense fund from our contingency. All right, I made the motion. Commissioner White's second, all in favor? All against?
I'm telling you, make it true.
Oh, yes, I forgot that one. Second one shocked me. But included that motion, a budget amendment to transfer the money from Road and Bridge General to pay for the piece of equipment precinct three. Yes, Caterpillar 315.
Hey, before you read the bills off, I wanted to go over a couple of things, and I want it on record. Our attorneys are in here just for, you know, so it's recorded forever in a day. So one of the things, there's a couple of things on precinct four on the bill, bill page, that I wanted to share with you guys. There is a charge on there, 2022, it's a toll violation. And we have done extensive research on this. It appears in 2022, somebody stole the license plate off of a piece of equipment in Newton County, put it on another piece of equipment, and went through a toll and was cited. And there has been, we have not been successful in paying or getting this taken away. We went through every, this has been literally three years I fought this. It's $6.12. So I'm proposing we pay it and put it behind us, since it's just enough. So, and then the second thing is down at the bottom, there is a charge here for County Road 4155 incident. I gave, I gave the judge a packet on that, and I presented it to our assistant county attorney, went over it with her, met with the homeowner. What happened in that incident was, we had a gentleman running a boom mower. He reached a point where he needed to turn around. He mowed one side of the road, the right-hand side, and he needed to turn the piece of equipment around to start mowing the other way coming out. Well, when he did that, he actually hooked the tire on a gate hinge off of an old fence post. The homeowner had put up a brand-new privacy fence. Well, when that happened, that tire literally, it didn't explode, but it blew a big hole in it. Those tires on those new boom mowers are filled with beet juice. It weighs more than water, it's, it's, it don't, it don't have any rusting agent, it won't rust the rim, and it's what they put in them up north, so they don't freeze.
Yeah, and it don't freeze.
But it is, you read the MSD, Material Safety Data Sheet, it's an immediate stain producer. So this guy just built this new seven-foot privacy fence out of six-by-six treated posts, and then he got all these Japanese planks, I forget what you call them, I mean, it's a beautiful fence. Well, now it's stained beet juice, and three sections of that fence have to be replaced. So talking with our attorneys, that homeowner's requested a $2,500 reimbursement for that fence. That's just the materials, that's an approximate, that's cheap. When he told me that, I was like, praise the Lord, let's jump on it. Beet juice, it looked like, it looked like a bomb went off, it looked like, I mean, it's oil, right? It's some sort of oil, it literally looked like an oil spill there. We cleaned it all up, and he's going to be happy with this, and if court proves it, I'm going to be very happy with it as well. Miss, did I cover everything?
Thank you. I'm ready. Paying the bills, item number 17.
General fine, $144,065.70. Road and Bridge General, $144,108.66. Road and Bridge Precinct Three, $588.82. Road and Bridge Precinct Four, $1,567.70. Commission Special Precinct One, $19,068.89. Commission Special Precinct Two, $19,293.67. Commission Special Precinct Three, $13,884.80. Commission Special Precinct Four, $10,207.94. Record preservation of $200. Sheriff's Van, $130.85. Solid Race disposal, $9,498.38. Newton County Lottery, $275.35. Distorable operating, $277.26. Technology fine, $263.35. For total law funds, $363,428.50.
I make a motion to pay the bill.
All right, motion paid by Commissioner Hopson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Benson, all in favor? All against? All right, leaving my left side table.
Make the motion, we adjourn the court session.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner White, second by me, all in favor? All against?
That's much more than...
I want to do a beep, looks like on the fence.
I seen it.